We're at 7:00 PM. I'll call to order this meeting of August 19th, Board of Selectmen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and just a reminder, this is being broadcast live on Chelmsford TV. So we'll start the meeting with the joint meeting with the school committee. Town moderator?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. Would the school committee please sit in the front row? Sorry, Mr. Harrington. I will note for the record that all the members of the Board of Selectmen are present, as are all the members of the school committee, so there is no problem with a quorum. And at this point, I think that we will do the Neshoba Valley Technical High School spot first.
Are you going to do the other one, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's why I'm doing this one first, and then second will be...
Right, right. But that's okay.
Well, I didn't see the agenda. How is it set up?
No, no, no. You preside over a meeting for the Neshoba Tech. Under the statute, you do not preside at a meeting for the vacancy on the school committee.
Actually, I thought I did, but I'll take your word for it.
Because we've done this with the planning board and other elected boards.
No, it was just those two. That's the only two that I understand. But if you don't want me, that's fine. Gets me out of here earlier. Then definitely Neshoba Tech, okay? So I will entertain motions for the position that was vacated by the untimely passing of Richard Defradis. It is a full, regular position.
I'll nominate Sam Polton.
Okay. We have a nomination for Mr. Polton.
Second.
Second, thank you. Do we have any other nominations? There being none, we will have only one candidate. But as is my practice, I will give Mr. Polton an opportunity to address the joint board if he wishes. Sam?
Limited to two hours.
Actually, I'm only coming forward, not for myself, but to just, once again, praise the shoes that I'm going to attempt to fill. Dick Defradis was just an awesome member of Neshoba. Good at every place he served, but he was particularly good at Neshoba, and it was an honor to serve with him. And I know that there is not another candidate, so it would serve me best to say as little as possible. So I'll say, thank everyone that didn't apply, and thank you for your continued confidence, and please feel free to be in touch with me to ask any questions that you might have, either tonight or anytime. So again, thank you, and to Dick's memory, we're going to be having a tribute pretty soon, sometime in November. I thought I'd have the date tonight, but I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polton. At this point, I will poll the members of the Board of Selectmen, and then I will poll the school committee members. Selectmen Crocker Timmins?
Aye.
Well, please state a name.
State my name?
No, state the name of the candidate you're supporting.
Oh, I support Sam Polton for the position.
Selectmen Wojcisz?
Sam Polton.
Chairman LeFev?
Sam Polton.
Emily Antle, Selectmen?
Sam Polton.
Selectmen Dixon?
Sam Polton.
Mr. School Committee Member Moses?
Sam Polton.
Mr. King?
Sam Polton.
Chairman? Ms. Newkin?
Sam Polton.
And Ms. Santos?
Sam Polton.
Well, it's unanimous, so congratulations, Mr. Polton. And I guess you don't need me anymore.
We'll just note that we now have a vacancy in the alternate member for Neshoba Tech with Sam's ascension to the permanent member. So if anybody's interested, please notify us, or any of the members of the school committee, or Selectmen, or Town Manager's Office, and we'll have to repeat this once the alternate member arrives.
Well, you might ask if there's anybody here tonight that came for that reason.
Oh, sure. You can do that, too.
I mean, you never know. You never know.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Apparently, he's not going to. He can.
Was there anybody interested in running for the alternative seat for the Neshoba Valley?
We didn't receive any response.
Okay, just let me check. All right, so we're going to now do the joint meeting with the school committee for the Chelmsford School Committee. Okay, so we have, my understanding, two candidates. And why don't we start with... Should we just have Jeff come up and talk here? Jeff, do you want to?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Dougherty, 1156 Thomas Drive, and I'm interested in having the honor of fulfilling Al Thomas's remaining term on the school committee. I've been in Chelmsford schools for over 40 years. I look around and see some of my students here from back when I was younger. I taught for 19 years. I was a dean for 19 years. I began my career as a junior in college as a substitute teacher. Then a student taught, and I taught at Parker for three years. Then I suffered through the two and a half and got laid off about seven times, but I kept coming back. Finally got my revenge, got my name on the stationery. As a dean, my wife just retired as a special ed chair, and my two kids, Patrick and Bridget, graduated from the Chelmsford schools. And I'm at a point in my life where I like to give back, and it's an opportunity for me to bring my expertise and my experience to work with the school committee, and just to keep the Chelmsford Public Schools, the great schools that they are. As Al always said, "They're not good schools, they're great schools." And I know, working together, we can make them better schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. With that, we also had an application from, again, I'm going to try at this, Badri Upiliapan?
Badri Upiliapan.
Badri Upiliapan.
Okay. He's not here tonight. He did reach out to, I think, most of us. So those are the two. Is there anybody else who would have had to have an application, right, Paul?
Yes, I'm not aware of any others.
So with that, we will poll, and start with the...
Do you want to read that into the record?
If you want, I can.
Are we going to do nominations? Or are we just going to vote on those two?
Well, we can do that. Should I read his letter? Is that standard?
Yeah, or you could summarize, or whatever. Yeah, it's a two-page letter. It's up to you, three.
Right, well...
You could summarize.
So, wasn't prepared for that, but I guess I'll do my best here. So he writes that he has an interest in serving for the remaining term for Al Thomas for the 2019-20 committee seat. He's been a resident for over 14 years and has children in the school system. He's observed transformation of the community, as well as the challenges it has ahead. He has a master's degree in engineering and another in management. He's been involved in a couple volunteer positions, one elected position, and he volunteered in 2008-09 for the first energy conservation committee, during which time the committee was involved in putting out the first performance-driven energy management plan for the town building. Subsequently, he served as the first volunteer for the director, volunteer director for Greener Chelmsford Initiative that Pat served with him, along with Selectman Eric Dalton, and Pat and Eric informed that. Some of the web content related to Greener Chelmsford Initiative is still being used today in the town website. He worked to encourage and recognize local businesses adopting greener business practices in support for a sustainable future. After a short break, he ran and was elected to the town meeting rep for Precinct 5 in 2016 and '19, where you may have seen him rise up to ask a few pointed queries to express an opinion or two. He feels there's an increasing demand on changes in the education system to prepare our children for the global future and the learning economy that will be characterized by shifting the transient opportunities driven by challenges in local, national, global economies, social, and demographic profiles. Educating the progress, in progress, the future guardians of our community will continue to be critical, be the critical remit to the symbolic relationship of three key groups of stakeholders: our teaching community, the students, and the parents, in conjunction with the broader set of residents of the town. Since the school system is the main brand of Chelmsford and has the power to attract, increase, and protect the vitality and viability of our local economy and the social fabric into the future, the burden of the school committee to think holistically and help shape the focus of the school programs while balancing a variety of priorities in the community is set front and central in the coming years to successfully navigate the necessary transformations of our future success. As a school committee member, he had a list of five items here that he was going to focus on: supporting our teachers in their mission through collaboration opportunities and assist their effectiveness to increase parental community participation, learning outcomes that increase the success for students and alumni of Chelmsford schools; coordinating with the BOS Economic Development and Master Plan Committee to ensure community-wide priorities are leveraged; helping with the marketing and branding efforts of the Chelmsford schools, or simply any residence, ideas, initiatives that may need appropriate due process and diligence. He recognizes that some members may naturally have some concerns on either his background or experience or suitability to the school committee. To that, he would say that outlook at the work of the community members is one of the requires keeping the interests of all stakeholders in focus, as mentioned before, the prosperity of Chelmsford Schools brand. Additionally, his education history, his work history in a technology company offers a different perspective that would benefit the committee. This is a great time to encourage different perspectives to look at the future and champion change. For the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, considering the replacement appointment, if he was voted in, he would intend it to continue action to run the school committee in 2020, providing the continuity that would be preferred in a future reelection in '23 for full term to serve at seven years, which I believe is a good duration commitment before committing, considering handing over the baton to the next generation. So he's asking for our vote tonight to fill the one-year term, and then he'll run again in 2020. So thank you for your consideration, and he signs it. So now, we'll look for nominations.
I'll nominate Badri Upiliapan.
I'll nominate Jeff Dougherty.
Need a second? What, either one of them?
No.
No? Okay, so now we do the roll call for the vote? Is that the right format, Pat?
Sounds good to me.
All right, so I'm going to start with the school committee. Committee Member Moses?
Jeff Dougherty.
Jeff Dougherty.
Jeff Dougherty.
Jeff Dougherty.
All right, Virginia?
Jeff Dougherty.
Badri Upiliapan.
George?
Jeff Dougherty.
Badri Upiliapan.
And I'll go with Jeff Dougherty. So it looks like that, we have Jeff Dougherty.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And do we have to adjourn the joint school committee meeting?
Sure.
Let me come motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, with that, we have a proclamation to be read?
Okay. It's a proclamation in recognition of Al Thomas. Whereas for over 45 years, Al Thomas has served the town of Chelmsford as a schoolteacher, coach, school administrator, town meeting representative, school committee member, and community volunteer. And whereas Al Thomas pioneered Project 300, McCarthy Middle School's annual food drive, which has since grown from its modest initial goal of collecting 300 items to being one of the largest food drives in the state, collecting approximately 30,000 items annually. And whereas Al Thomas started Chelmsford High School's first swim team, and the program has seen much success, including multiple championship titles. And whereas Al Thomas has earned many honors, such as the Chelmsford Libertarian of the Year, an induction into the Chelmsford High School Alumni Association's Hall of Fame, and the Eastern Massachusetts Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Hall of Fame. And whereas Al Thomas has now retired after serving eight years on the Chelmsford School Committee, now therefore, we the Chelmsford Board of Selectmen, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby recognize and pay tribute to Al Thomas and honor him for his many years of dedicated service to the town of Chelmsford. Signed this 19th day of August 2019 by the Board of Selectmen and sealed by Patricia Service, the Town Clerk. Congratulations, Al. I know he was...
Okay.
Probably do it all at once.
Maybe they should come forward.
Have the reps come up and do the...
Okay. Would we, could we have the reps come forward for their... Al, do you want to join them?
Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, everybody here, school committee. It's actually pretty easy for us to honor such a great public servant. Al Thomas has certainly been just a great partner for myself and for Representative Golden, Representative Govea, Representative Nangle, and the Chelmsford delegation. He's been a great advocate for education, certainly been somebody that myself and other members of the delegation can pick up the phone and call and, you know, get a rundown on things to advocate for. And your work has just been unparalleled, and I really appreciate everything you've done for us as, you know, as friends, and the work you continue to do. Certainly, I would probably just take a few excerpts from our resolution that we had for the House Representatives. We probably won't have as many details, Al, as the Board of Selectmen has. I mean, certainly, you know a lot about Al's career, but recognizing and honoring Alan Thomas Jr. of Chelmsford for his eight and one-half years of service on the school committee of the town of Chelmsford. Whereas esteemed Alan Thomas was an educator with the Chelmsford Public Schools from 1972 to 2009, serving as a social studies teacher at the Parker and McCarthy Middle Schools, and at Chelmsford High School as a dean of Hawthorne House, and as principal of Chelmsford High School. And whereas Al Thomas was actively involved with the students of Chelmsford, serving as a mentor and advisor to the Student Council, the Mock Trial Team, International Relations Team, and the Model UN. And Al Thomas also was actively involved in athletic programs of the Chelmsford Public Schools, serving as the first varsity swim coach, was twice named the Boston Globe Swimming and Diving Coach of the Year. And let me attest to this as well. A long time ago, I was the captain of the Westford Academy Swim Team, and I was the coach of the Chelmsford Team. We came, I probably, you know, a lot of first places, you know, in other towns that we went to. When we played, I want to thank Tom Golden's contribution. Every single time we went against Chelmsford, I think I probably came in third or fourth. Is that right, Al?
I don't know.
You guys, you guys, you guys were unbelievable. You was probably one of the best teams I've ever seen in my life. Anyway, the lull son of the MVC Coach of the Year numerous times, and was inducted into the Eastern Massachusetts Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Hall of Fame. And whereas the esteemed Al Thomas will be recognized on Monday, August 19, by the citizens and Board of Selectmen of the town of Chelmsford, and the Massachusetts House Representatives, hereby join with the family, friends, and citizens of Chelmsford in recognizing and paying tribute and honoring Al Thomas for his service, signed by the Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo, the Clerk of the House, Steve James, Representative Jim Arcero, Representative Tom Golden, Representative Nangle, and Representative Govea. Congratulations, and thank you for all you've done.
Yep, you want to say a few words?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone for the recognition. I've been very fortunate in my life. Things have worked out so that I've been able to do things that I love to do. And so to be recognized is nice, but I get so much satisfaction and pleasure in working with kids in the various ways that I have. And I'm originally from Middleborough, and it's still my hometown, but this is my second hometown. I'm really pleased to be a member of the Chelmsford community. It's a great town with a great high school and great middle and elementary schools. So thank you very much.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to open session. Is there anybody that would like to address the board in open session? If you would, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Chris Bowman, Precinct 4 rep, through Julio Street. And I would just like to make the board aware of a traffic issue, specifically, well, that was highlighted during the 278-282 Mill Road project. I'm going to be presenting this information to the Traffic Study Committee and to each of the Board of Selectmen members. Probably sometime this week, you'll get a copy of it. I want to put everything together so it's not piecemeal, okay? But specifically, the 278-282 Mill Road project sits between Elizabeth Drive and Princeton Properties Mill and 3. And these three areas sit in very close proximity to the Mill and Billerica Road intersection. Now, there are a lot of problems with that specific intersection and with Elizabeth Drive and Princeton Properties right now. When people are coming out, they're very impatient. They don't wait. They basically shoot out onto Mill Road to take the left without or without regard to oncoming traffic. So there are daily misses, near misses, with these drivers coming out of these entrances and exits for these properties. So with the new project at 278-282 Mill Road, now we're, now we have a third ingress egress where we're going to have a similar situation. So that's just going to magnify what's already occurring there. And so I have a recommendation in order to help alleviate that particular problem. And that's to redirect Elizabeth Drive from Mill Road over to Omni Way. So that'd be under the power lines over to Omni Way, which is all commercial road, and it has a set of traffic lights at the intersection of Omni Way and Billerica Road. So it'll be a lot safer for people coming in and going out of Elizabeth Drive. You'll minimize that kind of interaction on Mill Road right now. And a lot of the problems is because it's right there at the intersection. As soon as you take that curve, it's 180-degree curve, you're right there at Elizabeth Drive. Now, the power lines right there to the right of Elizabeth Drive, right now, go over Billerica Road, Mill Road, Turnpike Road, Concord Road, Acton Road, Hunt Road, Garrison Road, and Littleton Road. So there's, there's already multiple situations where we have regiled town roads going under these power lines. These are the same set of power lines. So I believe that that will help to enhance the traffic flow and increase traffic safety at the same time. Now, the other thing with the 278-282 Mill Road entrance and exit onto Mill Road is that there might be a possibility, so I'm just going to put this out, that that entrance, instead of being at Mill Road, could possibly be off of Elizabeth Drive through the analog devices parking lot at the outer edge. If there could be some sort of agreement with the owner of that property, then that ingress and egress to the new project could also be off of Elizabeth Drive, again minimizing the amount of occurrences where people shoot out onto Mill Road. And there have been crashes because of those specific instances. And one in particular last year occurred with a handicap, a school bus carrying handicapped students. The other thing about that particular intersection is that from the Route 3 junction side, there are two lanes taking a left onto Mill Road. The intent is for that outer lane for people to go to Elizabeth Drive. But a lot of what's happening, again, mostly due to impatience, is people at that outer end appear to be going to Elizabeth Drive and then shove right back into Mill Road. Now, that area, Mill Road, is not painted or marked in any way. So that is also a safety issue for traffic. So I thank you for listening. I'll be presenting this and other traffic concerns sometime this week to the Traffic Study Committee, Mr. McCall as the lead for that committee, and to all members of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anybody else that would like to address? Yep.
Hello. I'm nervous, and I'm sorry, but I'm angry. I'm here tonight. My name is Mary Donovan. I've been a Chelmsford resident for over 55 years, and I miss something very terrible that used to be in front of the Old Town Hall, and I would like to see it put back there. And that is the Gold Star Veterans World War II Memorial. I have been trying to find it. I cannot locate it anywhere. And if you would like a picture of it, I can't give this to you now because I just got someone else's address, one of the reps to contact. It is in your Chelmsford book. I have had five home phone calls at home, people wondering what has happened to it. I have called the Historical Society, and I have never gotten a call back. Can we locate it, and please put that veterans memorial thing back on? I know it's the Old Town Hall, and it's got another name. But as a taxpayer, do we still own that town hall just because it's called a Chelmsford Art?
Yes.
We still own it as a taxpayer? So in other words, I have the right to ask for that to be put back on the Old Town Hall, that memorial, veterans memorial.
Yep.
Amen.
Thank you.
I have a second one. Back a few years ago, my own mother-in-law donated money to have American flags for Chelmsford in memory of her brother. The flags are no longer in the ground. They all had a plaque on these flags. They were put in the ground. The holes are gone. The flags are gone, but there is flags up there. Where are those flags that the people have donated?
Where are you talking about?
Pardon me?
Where? Where are you talking about?
Chelmsford Center. The whole Chelmsford Center. People donated them.
Along the sidewalk?
Yes, on the sidewalks.
Years ago, they used to saw the poles and the holes in the sidewalk.
Where did they disappear to?
Before my time.
And if they do find them, I would like the plaque returned to my husband, because his mother and his uncle, they was donated in his memory, who got killed in the war.
That has been a while, but yeah. See what we can find out.
Good luck. I've been trying. I've had many calls and many people in the street asking me, and I don't know why they call me. I'm trying to stay out of politics, but I keep getting drawn to it.
You're not very successful, Mary, let me tell you.
Pardon me?
You're not being very successful.
No, I'm not. I lost one of the best things in town a few years back, and I won't go into that because I'm heartbroken. And I don't want to be heartbroken again. And I'm back fighting. And I am interested in the flags.
I know.
And if there is an occasion that you have a flag committee, I want to be on it. I am a very big, I have never served in the veterans. I have lost two relatives in it. My husband was in the Army. I have friends in the service. And I would want to see the veterans taken care of. And I will be here to fight for them.
Thank you, Mary.
So please give me a call. I'll be watching you on 99 Comcast. I won't be at too many meetings, but I won't miss it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Does anybody know the answers to what I asked? Does anybody know the answers to what I asked?
Not tonight.
Not right now.
We'll track them down. We'll get Paul and Mike on that and...
If you can, and if you need to, you can call me at home. I have an answer machine. Or, Pat, you know where else I am.
I know where you live, yeah, and I know where you...
No, you know where I'm working. You know where I'm working.
I know where you work, too.
Right. Thank you. I'll be looking forward to either seeing your faces or getting an answer. I will be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's good. Brian Latina, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Rep., 15 Jesse Road. Like to talk about Turnpike, Turnpike Road at the corner intersection of Turnpike and Mill Road. There were a bunch of trees that were clear cut at the corner. It's actually on the wrong corner if we were trying to reestablish the line of sight. When you come down Turnpike Road, every year for the last 20, I've usually called this after the grass cutting, the initial grass cutting in the spring, because they don't cut to the pole that allows you to see from the side to the left the oncoming traffic, and that's a danger to your left. Instead, we cut the trees on the right-hand side, which have no use for the person coming down the hill because you can't see past the rock wall and dirt. But more concerning to me was the defoliant that was sprayed in that area. Not sure what it was, but given the news in Monsanto and Agent Orange issues, I have a real concern that we're trying to follow Seattle's lead with our stormwater folks. Instead of trying to clean up our water, we're spraying defoliant, or in the case of Seattle, they used diesel fuel to kill the brush in areas around the corners of intersections that they don't like instead of cutting it. I didn't realize that's what it was until I saw number five, Daca Road, had also been sprayed at one of these rock drainage areas. And then I saw kind of clear cutting up by the new DPW on TV the other night, and I think when you get those areas and they're wet, they're considered wetlands, and you can't cut the vegetation, and I'm quite sure that you can't spray the stuff on it either. So I'd like to know, number one, what is it we're spraying on our corners and intersections? Are they certified to apply a defoliant? And are we looking downstream? Because on the corner of Turnpike and Mill, all that water from our tower area spills down into a drain and goes almost directly into our water aquifer just above the Riverneck Road water system. So I'd be concerned about what it is we're spraying in town now. Second concern on Turnpike is, I saw an article about the housing and some discussion about possibly having overlay areas be allowed to be, have residents built in IA districts. An IA district is a former or current industrial, light industrial area. The reason that you don't build in light industrial areas residential properties is typically because we're not sure what's there. I know they do tests, and they do a couple of groundwater tests and such things, but 88 Turnpike has 41 parts per billion tested, TCE contamination, and that's just two buildings down from the 168, Unit 104 Mill Road, I'm sorry, Turnpike Road Housing Development. I talked to a chemical engineer, they've been doing it for 40 years, and he said, "I would not dig anywhere near that area until you know where the plume is going for that contamination." 41 parts per billion TCE is 10 times the federal standard for contamination and 10 times the Massachusetts standard for contamination. Supposedly, we don't have it in our water supply, but this stuff goes airborne. If you have a basement, like the people directly across the street, it's in their basement, it's in the air, you will get leukemia or cancer from this, according to my chemical engineer associate. You will get it. If you're in that environment in the air. So this is why you don't want to build in a former industrial area residential homes. And we're trying to build and do that because grass is green or there's trees we can cut down, but you don't know what was there before. And this is a case in point where I sure wouldn't want to find out 20 years later that I've contaminated my kids. I actually lived in Woburn for a while, and we can talk about the same chemical here. One other topic, Mill at 129. The other night, I was coming home, and the road was blocked. Department of Transportation had a painting crew out, and they were busily painting 129 at Mill Road. It needed it really badly, hasn't been done in many years. Problem is that that intersection's all torn up. It should have been paved before you paint it with the plastic material and have our officers out there and pay that money for that kind of work. It looks very nice, but you painted a lot, you painted, used a lot of money, as a state of Massachusetts anyway, to paint on a piece of road that needs to be fixed first. I actually got out of the car and asked the guy painting if he was going to continue the double-left lane that used to have a sign saying you had to go up the hill onto Elizabeth Drive if you turned from the second-left lane, if he was going to continue that now-worn-out lane. It's been missing for about 10, 15 years now. You heard another speaker talk about people coming from the right-hand side. I almost got hit the other night from someone doing exactly that. That one lane, the second-left, can only go up Elizabeth Drive. It cannot turn onto Mill Road according to the design that they built. We either need to take that left lane, second-left lane, out and put a blinking yellow light, I know we've talked about that before, or repaint the solid-white line so you can only go up the hill on that. That will protect all the people that are now at the new housing development on Mill Road at that corner that don't know this. The one that almost hit me was actually on, she lived on Turnpike. It will also help us protect the people that are about to move into the 104 Turnpike facility. There's going to be a lot more traffic there, and if we don't put our signage back when it gets knocked down, and if we don't paint our lines back when they get worn out, and in this case, I hate to see the tax money go on roads that are being torn up. Then Chumsford, the next night, I believe, painted that end of Mill Road with double-yellow and white lines. After the planning board had discussed the new project going in there was not going to take our $350,000 amount given by Town Meeting from our snow budget to fix different sections of roads that had been in this year's project listing, but here we are, painting a line that's on an area of the street that's going to get torn up, according to one. One board is doing one thing, another board is painting and spending tax money, and I find that exasperating. Finally, signage at 104 Turnpike Road is still up. I appreciate that we got the three flags taken down. However, construction town bylaw says that you can have 12 feet of signage stating that there is a bank involved and the developer. 104 Turnpike has been allowed to have signage on a fence probably 100 feet long. First, they had it in front of the property, now it's at 90 degrees. But our bylaw clearly says 12 square feet of signage can be allowed, no more. So I'm not sure why we are allowing these folks to put their advertising up in a residential area that's supposed to be a buffer zone to keep us not looking commercial. I've been all over the country in the past couple of months, and New Jersey doesn't even do that. I was in California, they're building exactly the same development. It's all over the place. They don't put those signs up like that either. I know that they have dust fences, and I know that the material they're using happens to have signage on it. Turn them around backwards because it violates our sign bylaw. If the developers are going to be allowed to violate that law, I'm wondering what else is inside of those buildings that they've also violated, and I find that to be a problem. Residents here expect to be, we expect to follow the laws, and we expect the developers to as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Pat, will you run us through the committee vacancies, please?
Sure. Okay. We have the following vacancies on committees as of today. There's one vacancy on the Arts and Technology Education Fund, two vacancies on the Capital Planning Committee, three vacancies on the CCA Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, five vacancies on the Civic Committee, two vacancies on the Community Action Program Committee, three vacancies for associate members on the Council on Aging. The cultural council can have up to 21 members. There are many vacancies there if you're interested. Two vacancies on the Energy Conservation Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, three vacancies on the Holiday Decorating Committee, two vacancies on the Middlesex Canal Commission. Parade Committee is welcoming all applicants. The Permanent Building Committee has one vacancy. Personnel Board has one vacancy. Public Celebrations Committee has five vacancies. Sign Advisory Committee has three vacancies. The Skate Park Committee has two vacancies, and the Tree Committee has one vacancy. If you're interested in applying for a position on any of these committees, you can fill out an application on the town's website or at the town manager's office. Thank you.
So question on committees, Paul.
Yes.
The Civic Committee, I received an email that we have an application for someone to go on the Civic Committee.
Yes.
But there's only one person active on it now.
Mm-hmm.
This application would make two, that's still not even enough to have a quorum. I don't think we've had a meeting in three years. Is there anything we should do with that, or should we just? Any comments?
I mean, it's a selectman committee, so I don't...
Right. So what do we? I was asked what to do with it, and I'm...
Can we change the number of people on it?
Well, I think five is a good number to have on it.
But if we can't get five, and we can get two, can we change it to three until we can get more?
Because they can't even have a quorum.
Right, I understand.
So...
So it's people sitting around in a room talking about things they can't do anything about, like that's, you know, for coffee.
Well, that's why we don't have a meeting.
Right, so...
We recruit one more person, then you'd have, you could have a quorum. Is it a seven or a five-member committee?
It's five.
You make it a three-member committee, and you have a quorum already.
That's what I was saying.
I think Pat just volunteered.
No, I didn't.
No, but that's what I was saying. If you make it a three-member committee, now at least you've got two people who can sit in a room and talk and do something, as opposed to, you know, not...
I'm just bringing it up because I think...
You could always expand it if you get more interest in the future.
That's what I was saying. That's exactly what I said.
Let the two people get started and...
What does it take to drop it to a three-person committee?
A vote?
The direction of the board, and we'll post...
I make a motion to make the Civic Committee a three-person committee.
Do we have a second for discussion? I'll second. I have discussion.
Yep, we have a person, a second, or a...
Now it's discussion.
No, it's discussion.
Now it's discussion.
What, you have three out of five now that are unfilled?
Well, we have one out of five, so it's filled. So there's four vacancies, and I think we have someone interested in applying.
But it says we have five vacancies. It says here we have five unexpired, well, five vacancies, according to this. That's why I thought it was five.
So we have one filled, so was it six?
I think it might have started out with seven. Here comes Mary.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have one question that may be our statement that you people may not be aware of. But you know there are a lot of people, mainly seniors, in this town that do not have the internet and have no way of filling out an application or getting the information. The only thing is through the 99 on cable.
Well, you can't fill out an application by TV.
Maybe you might want to take that under your hat and find a way that maybe seniors, mainly, and I'm one of them, I don't want the internet.
Well, they could call the town manager's office, and I'm sure somebody would fill out an application.
Must be a better way.
I mean, I think I put a notice out in the Senior Senators' Newsletter last month about committee vacancies and people willing to come forward to...
But like you just said, you watch it on Comcast.
I'm sorry.
You do watch it on Comcast.
Oh, yes. I watch you guys every week.
We read the phone number. You can always call Mr. Town Manager's office and say, "I would like to sign up for this," and I am sure they will walk you through that.
Yeah, because no application could be filled out on the internet.
Well, you could come in, and someone will print it off for you, and you could do it that way, too.
There's got to be a better way, but just a suggestion.
But how, okay, so just out of curiosity, you know, I've only had the internet for half my life, but in the days...
I had it all my life up until a few years back.
In the days before the internet, when you wanted to fill out an application...
I'm sorry, I can hardly hear you.
In the days before the internet, you had to go to a place, pick up a paper application, and fill that out, and I remember doing that.
Correct.
So how would it be a hardship to come to Town Hall and say, "I would like to apply for these committees," and have someone print you off the application?
For me, I work.
The website must be a five-person committee.
It's hard for me to get here.
So then...
Who's the one?
Who's the one?
As a general thing, if it is very hard to get here, and it's very, and internet is impossible, how can you be on a committee?
Well, I'm just, I am just talking about myself. There may be other people that might have other suggestions, and maybe they are listening.
Well, okay, so, you know, we...
So maybe we do that.
You can come to Town Hall and fill out the application in paper, just the way we used to before internet.
Emily, I think she just summed it up. If anybody's at home right now listening, and you have recommendations...
I'm sure they really should, because the people that called me regarding...
Right. But if they have recommendations about ways to make it easier, please call the town manager.
Yeah, come on in.
But I've already notified somebody that I would be on a certain committee.
Yes. We don't have that committee.
When I'm waiting for a call back regarding it, then I will cross that bridge. But I'm just thinking about other people that are living in this town that no longer...
So if there's anybody at home listening, and they have an idea how to make it easier, please call the town manager's office with your suggestion.
Would we like...
If anybody at home is listening and knows a way to make it easier, please call the town manager's office.
And would, we'd like to take this moment to just read off the town manager phone number so that this can be...
Should we give him a cell? No.
Okay, we still have this motion in a second.
All right, so, but you just looked it up online. It is a five-person committee. There's one person. I think the reason why she's listed but not off of this is, I think there was an issue with swearing in.
Yeah.
I think she was nominated and approved, but never came down, and it was sworn in. So maybe that's why it's still showing as unfilled. So, but now we'll have two out of five. So do we want to make it a three-person? We have a motion. Any more discussion?
So who's the second? You?
I seconded it so that we could discuss it.
No, 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 the second person on the committee.
Oh, no, we have one now.
We have one applicant, right, right.
And Kilman, what's the last name? Kilman?
Kilman, yeah.
Kilman is on it, on it. I think she was nominated.
Okay, I understand that. Who's the second person?
We had somebody, Pat, Christina reached out to me and said she had someone wanting to apply, but I didn't know what to do with the committee because it still was only two out of five. Why have the person apply if, I don't know, I wanted to have a discussion before.
Are you one of the five? You count as one of the five?
Well, it does...
I don't, I'm not, I'm not one of the five.
When we...
My picture's on there.
When we set that up, and that's because you're the, there's a reason for that, but when we set that committee up, we said, we specified that a member of the Board of Selectmen had to be a member of it. There has to be a member of the board on that committee.
Would that make me three?
That would make...
So now you've got three out of five. You have a quorum.
So now you have a quorum.
Yeah, so now you can keep it at five.
Make it three with two out, that's what the ordinance...
All right, but with that being said, we still have five listed here, five open seats, so should that not be five?
Well, if this one person gets sworn in, and if the other one...
But if I'm one, shouldn't then at least be only four here?
Well, you're not sworn into it either yet, right? We have to appoint...
Yeah, but nobody else can fill the seat other than a selectman, you just said.
But if it were a three-person committee, one of you couldn't make the meeting, you could still hold the meeting. With two out of three, you'd have a quorum. Whereas if it's a five-person committee, you'd all have to make it.
All right, so we're leaving it alone, I guess is what I'm feeling. All right.
I don't think so. I think you ought to cut it to three.
No, because if you cut it to three, then you have, then you have, two people can meet and discuss things and put that information out to the third person who couldn't make it, and it's valid. So you actually have this committee doing something instead of just sitting there and doing nothing because they can't...
All right, so you need all three, the Board of Selectmen members plus the other two, to show up to have a meeting versus if it's three, two can have a meeting.
Yes.
All right, there we go. Anybody else?
I think three is the right number.
We can always add more. It's not a big deal.
I like being a five-member committee.
But it's not filled, so...
I understand, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second.
So right now, if everybody gets sworn in, you have three out of five?
Correct. But you would need everybody to show up to the meeting to have a meeting.
How do you feel about it? You're the chair, right?
Doesn't matter to me. I'm fine with it, three or five, but... I told this person it expressed interest. I was even wondering if we needed a civic committee.
What is the point of the civic committee? You want to give a couple sentences to summarize?
My guess, I've never attended a meeting, they've never had a meeting, but my guess is that it's to foster civic duty in the town.
The intent of the civic committee, when it was set up, Matt Hanson was the leading driver for it, was to have a committee that would try to reach out to people like Mary Donovan and her neighbors, to recruit them... to recruit them for committees. And one of the major things that it did was to decide when it was appropriate to name something after a person that should be recognized. Like this room was named the Dennis Reddy Meeting Room at the behest of the civic committee. There was also a plaque and a tree planting outside the School Administration Office for Carol Cleven. There was the...
The Old Town Hall.
Ralph Hoslander. Right. And Walter Hedlund's little plaque by the flags on the common. So it was to do things like that, to recognize people that have served this community in so many ways, and also to encourage others to follow in their footsteps. There were thoughts about having some kind of volunteer day where they would set up booths, maybe in the common or at the CCA, and have members of all the committees come and invite the community so they could get, you know, one-on-one explanation for what the different committees do if they would see any interest. Unfortunately, it did kind of fizzle out after a while. But I think it's a valid committee.
So Pat, can you say a little more about why you feel we need to hold it at five versus like go from three and then grow it?
Well, yeah, I don't know. Just philosophically, I don't like three-member committees. I think sometimes it has too much control in just one or two people in it if it's only a three-member committee. I think this committee really, when it was started, I was also under two of us, two selectmen on it, Matt Hanson and myself. There was a lot of work that was going to be done at first because they tried to consolidate all the information about people that had served on committees, both elected and appointed, to try to come up with a database that would help the town clerk even to keep track of how many years people had served. So I think it could be a lot of work. But I think, too, for some of the things that are done, as far as the recognitions, I think that should be a discussion of more than two people. Yeah. So that's...
Thank you.
My thoughts on it.
So I guess my only question is that if the committee is not meeting because there aren't enough, but it can do this good work, if we shrink it temporarily until we garner enough interest and enough members, and, you know, even on like a three-person committee, it's an open meeting. Members of the public who are interested can come and sit in for a couple of sessions. There's nothing, you know, there's no reason they can't. It's a town committee. So if people are interested in that, then they can grow it. And if the committee is actually functional and active, that's a good way to grow it back up again.
Well, I'll jump in here. So if we have someone else interested, and that gets us two, and then I'll make the third. And whether it's a committee of three filled by three or three out of five, the same power is in the same three people's hands. But at least you have three, and you can have your meeting. So let's just move to keep it at five, and we'll move on. And if, when I'm out of office, if it dies back out or the selectman doesn't step in next year to fill the spot, then you can readdress it next year. But if we get the third person, I'll commit to going to every meeting and making sure there's a quorum.
And your first task can be to recruit a fourth.
So I have two volunteers.
So does that mean that the motion has been withdrawn?
Well, we probably should have the vote, or...
All right, I can withdraw the motion. I just wanted to discuss the reasons, so that's fine. All right.
So...
So I will withdraw the motion to make it a three-person committee.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry for that sidetrack. We're going to go to public hearings. So the first one is a public hearing for the Class II Auto Dealership License for A1 Auto Collision, DBA A1 Luxury Cars at 297 Littleton Road. Is anybody here?
Hello?
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Yosam Penny. I am the new owner for A1 Auto Collision. A1 Auto Collision, I've been in Chelmsford for 47 years. I am the third owner, and I've been working with the second owner for six years, and I took over last year. And when I took over, I had been doing a lot difference in the company, doing a lot of charity work for the police department and doing a lot for, not sure, but tech institution, having some of the students come over and help them to better themselves as far as their technical institution career they're trying to work on. We are doing business as A1 Luxury Cars. We have a lot of customers that comes to the shop, and they ask about, based on the work we've been putting in, they want to know much about cars. And because I don't have their licenses and I have to use other people's licenses to get their car for their customers, it makes it hard because I don't get a chance to go to the auction myself. And when it happens to be someone buy the car under A1's name, and there's a problem on it, it doesn't red flag the other person, but it comes to A1. So if I'm able to have the permission to go to the auction, it's going to allow me to deal with the customers directly so I can build the name of A1 better than dealing with third parties.
Paul, just understand, if we do grant a license, he still has to go through the process with the state police? Or does, have you already been through the beginning process with the state police and got approval? Or does that come after?
No, it's after.
After, okay. There had been a license there, as you saw in the packet, a decade ago.
Yes, there was licenses before.
So you intend to have just three cars maximum on site for sale?
Yes.
And these are primarily cars you get at the auction, clean up and sell?
Yes, please.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Comments? Your motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak from the public? Seeing none?
Okay, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Class II Auto Dealership License for A1 Auto Collision.
Well, second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class II Auto Dealership License for A1 Auto Collision, doing business at 270, 297 Littleton Road.
Little second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Hi, Yosam Penny. I'm sorry. Promise to do the work I said in the public of hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. So licenses. We have a application to change hours for an all-alcoholic beverage package store for JNC Artega LLC, DMBA The Wine Rack on 210 Boston Road. Is there anybody here for that?
Hello, my name's Cassandra. I'm the new owner of The Wine Rack, and I was just wondering if we'd be able to change the hours. The hours that I put on there were the previous owners, and I wasn't aware that when I did the application that I should have put those hours instead of the ones that I had put on the application.
So what are you looking for for hours?
I believe it was eight to 11 weekdays.
So what's up there is what you're asking for?
Yeah.
The license was approved to 10:00 PM weekdays, and then Sunday's still eight. And so she wants to go to 11 on all days.
Where does Saturday fall? Is that a...
It's a weekday.
That had been previously approved to 11, yeah.
Okay.
So those are the hours you want? So we have this correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
What are the, I mean, I actually have no idea what goes on after like nine o'clock.
Yeah, those are standard hours for liquor stores.
So if those are standard hours, then, yeah, all right.
I think all our other package stores have those same licenses now.
All right.
Motion.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the change in hours for The Wine Rack for weekdays, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sundays, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
All right. We have reports and presentations. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. While I don't have a formal presentation tonight, I'll give you an update on what we've been doing. As Selectman Dixon may know, this week, we received a lot of calls and emails into the office regarding the truck situation on Dunstable, Swain, and Ledge Road. And it became apparent after these calls that there was something going on in the neighborhood. And eventually, somebody showed the flyer that was placed in the packet, which is now displayed up on the screen, that there is, as you know from our June 12 traffic input session, there is a concern that's still ongoing by the residents up there. And that will dovetail into the next item. One of the things that is ongoing with the Traffic Safety Committee and has been going on since a lot of these issues started coming up late last year has been the Traffic Data Action Plan that the Chief of Police had instituted. As the calls came in to our office, we worked very closely with Chief Spinney, as well as Lieutenant Spence and many other members of his staff to come up with a coordinated effort to monitor traffic around town and to increase traffic enforcement in the areas that we're receiving the complaints, most notably the North Chelmsford area. As you can see from the report from the chief, that beginning the first of the year through August of 2019, he and his staff had made over 4,000 motor vehicle stops resulting in over 1,700 citations, and they documented 458 accidents. With regard to specific enforcement in the area of the North Chelmsford complaints, the week after our June 12 traffic input session, he has deployed, as of today, over 40 traffic enforcement deployments, which means he's had cruisers out there over 40 times. They've made over 270 motor vehicle stops. And what's notable is there was only two commercial violations out of the 90 or so tickets that were issued by the department. He wound up spending over $6,000 on overtime, but the cars have been out there. I've noticed on social media, there's been some complaints, but there's also been a lot of comments and kudos to the Chelmsford Police Department because if you live in that area, you will see that the cruisers are out there on a regular basis along Dunstable Road, Main Street, and Swain Road. So to that end, we are still actively looking at solutions in that area. And one of the things I would like to bring at the board, to the board's attention and ask for some direction, as you know, we talked in the past about improving the end of Ledge Road at the intersection of Dunstable Road. So I had corresponded with National Grid earlier this year, and we had talked about what needed to be done in order to improve that roadway. One of the things that we were looking at is whether or not we could get a heavy commercial vehicle exception. However, that was going to need the input from the other communities, most notably Westford and Tingsborough. And that has not moved forward. So if we wanted to continue to do any improvements there, we would have to essentially move the telephone pole. But before we could even do that, we would have to commission an engineering plan from the DPW here in town, which would also necessitate a public hearing for a pole petition. So I'm at the point now where National Grid will not move any further until I submit to them an engineering plan. So I'm looking for the board's permission to move forward on that, to have engineering put together a plan. It's going to require surveys, studies, looking at the topography of the land. But also, it's going to require a hearing because National Grid is looking to move several of the telephone poles around the area of Ledge and Dunstable because the pole that is right in the middle is carrying a lot of feeder lines up Ledge Road, and there's a lot of tension, as I understand it. a lot of tension, as I understand it. So they're going to have to move it, move guide wires, and they're probably going to have to move several poles in each direction. So it would impact some properties in that area. So before we initiate that, I want to make sure that that's the direction the board would like me to go in on that particular matter.
What would roughly the expense be for the...
I did not get that from DPW. I just know that they said it would take considerable effort on their staff's part. So I just wanted to get an idea if that's...I can get back to the board by the next meeting. National Grid is not going to do anything until we submit a plan. So if you want, I can get an estimate from DPW as to what that would cost.
I thought when we talked about this several months ago, that, George, maybe you have a better memory of that than me, that somebody, that even National Grid was going to do that for us? I thought...
We talked about it, it's a possibility, but I think then you approached...
So they did indicate that they would do it for us, and they asked me to get a plan going. And I, we'd, together, we had mutually put it on hold pending the outcome of whether or not we could get a heavy commercial vehicle exemption on Swain Road, which would be forcing the traffic northbound on Dunstable Road, if we could get a truck exclusion on Swain Road. So we held off on moving the pole to figure out whether or not we would be able to get the truck exclusion. That doesn't seem like a likelihood. But if we still want to try and provide some relief to the residents up there, we should consider moving forward with improving the end of that road, in the hope that the trucks would start turning left and heading north. We could do all this work, and that might not guarantee that the trucks turn left. But if we want to try that, we're going to have to look at widening it, and then it's going to require some input from DPW.
Well, Swain Road's being widened right now anyway, isn't it?
Well, this is the end of Ledge Road at Dunstable.
Oh, Ledge Road, where you want to make a left turn to go... The biggest complaints have been the time of the day, which I'm not sure we can control the road or not, but that has been a...the sand is like 30 trucks sometimes at by 5:00 in the morning, and the use of Jake brakes, which I think we can outlaw. I'm not sure.
I've been more happy to...
I mean, we could get, we can get a...I don't know that for sure. I maybe spoke a little bit.
So I responded specifically to some of the emails that came in regarding the Jake brakes, and I forwarded to both the Chief of Police, as well as some of the individual residents, a memorandum from the Department of Transportation, which indicated they are opposed to any type of Jake brake prohibitions. It's actually called engine braking.
But I think the companies have told their drivers, one company particularly, I know for sure, has said, "No Jake brakes." You know, I'd be willing to go and meet with the owners, you know, and ask them in an informal situation, because we have to be a little bit careful because of the laws and what have you. But, I mean, if you sit down sometimes with them, and, you know, they may be, and tell them what our concerns are, they may cooperate a little bit, you know what I mean? We could start a little, you know, get more with honey sometimes. So I'd be willing to go up there if you want to go.
Not a problem. But I would like to finish the topic of Ledge Road at Dunstable. Is that something, would the board like more information for DPW?
I think the concern is, and as you know, we've gone through poll hearings, anytime you move poles, it means the pole's going to go somewhere else, in front of someone else's property. And then, we just don't want to go through that exercise of considerable time and expense, and then basically, well, now, we're not, you know, that's the whole dilemma of the whole thing, is you make one person happy, you upset somebody else.
Well, not only that, you're talking about several poles.
Talking about several poles, yeah.
And there's no guarantee that, after you move several poles...
It's kind of making a difference.
And you anger some people, that they come down the end of the road and take a left versus a right.
Exactly.
There's an awful big load on that one pole to begin with. I don't even know how that one pole can continually carry that. I mean, it looks like they just keep adding things to it, and it's kind of leaning a little bit to begin with, right? And plus, there's somebody, I think, looking to build there or something. Isn't there something to do with that corner piece? Is it somebody's buying the land, and is a question of the boundaries?
Well, some of the residents had indicated to me that they thought that lot on the corner of Dunstable, on the north side of Ledge Road, was going to be up for sale and maybe being redeveloped. One of the residents who routinely calls said they've heard that project's on hold. But I can't confirm that, I haven't spoken to the...
Do we know, will we find out who the owner is and give him a call?
We can do that.
But to the greater issue, if you do have a pole there that's under great stress, and people are worried about it as it is, why wouldn't we...
They would move it, they would come themselves and ask it to be moved, the utility would. They've done that in the past.
Maybe that's what I was thinking.
But they haven't.
But I don't think...
They maybe haven't even really looked at it, you know, I mean, I...
But they will move it as, if we are doing a traffic improvement plan there to widen the road, they said that they would move it, no cost to the town, as part of that project.
They require it, yeah.
I guess I would want to know yet more, you know, what resources, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, so I think if we can't move forward unless we do the engineering study, in principle, I support that. If the board needs more information on what the cost is, and whether, you know, you can easily cover that or not, then that's fine, let's get the information. That's my feeling.
I feel like, in general, anytime you know that something is going to require an estimate for like an engineering study, it's best to just bring a ballpark, just to say, this is the normal range for this sort of thing, just upfront. Because just going back and forth and waiting a couple of weeks between meetings is sometimes frustrating for people who are in the thick of it.
Yeah, that's probably my frustrationism. I don't want to wait two weeks, because I've sat up there and seen the aggravation these people are having.
Yeah. Well, I just got the email this week, so I didn't know.
No, I mean, and I just, I understand, like, in general, when there is that possibility to just come and say, "We can get something done," and this would be the approximate ballpark. It's, it just, it helps.
So Mike, you'll have that?
Yes. Yeah, and I can probably forward it to the board in advance.
Can I just ask a question about this traffic data, traffic action plan? I wanted to clarify some of the language here. So we had a total of 4,421 motor vehicle stops throughout the town.
Yes.
And at this particular intersection, they made 270 stops?
The areas of concentration...
Between June and August.
Between June and August, following the traffic input session. The chief said he was running the deployments along Ledge, Dunstable, Main, in the area of Granite and School Street. Those were where the areas of concentration were. While in North Chelmsford, they made the 270 stops, which resulted in 90 citations, two of which were on commercial motor vehicles, which were trucks.
Okay, so that's like 6% of the total stops.
Well, not really, because the top number is for the whole year, and the middle one is only for a couple of months.
Well, yeah, but it's still...
Oh, you're talking about, okay. I see what you're saying.
I think, Mike, there's a problem with overloading up there, too, with one company, and I would like to see those scales up there at one point.
After we last spoke, Selectman Dixon, I spoke to the chief and Lieutenant Spence, and they're working to see if they can get somebody to come up there. One of the biggest challenges we're going to face is where we could do it, because it's not a good place along the road to deploy it. So we're looking at that, and they're actively talking to the state police about getting someone up here. So...
Probably is the best place to be right on Swain, have to be on Swain Road, it's in...
Has to be safe, though.
But because Dunstable gets so much traffic, too, right, you know, and more houses. I mean, there's a little bit where the Rod and Gun Club is, you know, in front of that area, maybe if that's, you know, if it's level enough to do it, I don't know how much room it takes.
So in terms of listing overtime expenditures, and then the 90 citations were not in that summary, what does an average citation bring in in terms of revenue?
I couldn't answer that question. I'd have to send you an email with that number. I think they can range from, you know...
You know, $15 to $200, I'm sure.
I think the police are very careful on that, because you can't, you can't send them out with the intent to bring in money.
Well, no, 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 absolutely not, it's not. But, I mean, like, if you're telling me that this is, this was, you know, 6,200 in overtime...
I don't think they're giving you that information.
Did you find enough egregious...
We're not giving you that information as a means of justification.
No, not, no, but, I mean, just, you know, if...
The state police does that as well.
Are 270 stops justifying, are 6% of the stops for the year justified?
I think what the chief was trying to show is that, in response to the requests from the residents, not only at the traffic input session, but the emails we've been receiving right along, that they've been out there in force, and they aren't seeing the violations, that people are saying that every five minutes is a speeding vehicle, because he's been out there 40 days, at least, and he's stopped 270 cars, which resulted in 90 violations. So you're looking at maybe a little over two and a half, three violations a day, based on those numbers, and only two of which were trucks. So he's being responsive to all the citizens' issues, but they're not seeing the huge number of violations that people are saying are out there.
Right.
You know, that's not to say that there may be more violations, they may be happening more in the days they're not there, but he's putting them out as often as he can, based on the overtime that he has.
Okay.
So the other 88 tickets were speeding and things like that, then?
They were just not commercial vehicles, that's what he's only...
Oh, okay.
And the other thing that we're working on, and which I will put together for an upcoming meeting, is the committee has met informally the first time last month, and today, we went through the list that we had previously presented of all the issues that were raised, as well as any of the emails that have come in subsequent to that, and they come in almost daily. And we went through and started looking at the ones that we can take care of immediately, which ones have been done, and we're categorizing the other ones, and we're looking at which organizations that we can get assistance with, including the state, and we're making progress on that. And I'll be happy to categorize those and put them on a slide for you for the next meeting.
Just before that, I received an email today from a Georgian, Patricia Rowe, on Riverneck Road. They weren't aware, they didn't go to the traffic meeting, but the one thing they asked for, a concern for them, was the amount of trucks now on Riverneck Road, because the businesses are out that way, and a lot of speeding that's on that road, so I don't know if you have that on the list, but...
All right. Did that come in as an email?
Yes, I can forward that to you.
If you forward that, greatly appreciate it. But other than that, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have for an update. What we might wind up doing going forward is staggering the date of the Traffic Safety Committee with the Board of Selectmen meetings, because we met this morning, so it's really hard for me to get you the results of that meeting, because we meet the same name. So we're going to have to offset those meetings by a week or two, so that we can update you in a timely fashion in the packet.
Anything else? Paul, Town Manager reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I have in your packet this evening is the second draft of the warrant for the 2019 Fall Annual Town Meeting. There are no new articles, and I'll remind the board that your next meeting, in three weeks, on September 9th, you'll be signing the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting. So we're getting to the end. Where we'll go from this evening is, the Planning Board met last Wednesday evening, and they reviewed the, what are now six zoning articles, is one addition to what's on the list, and with Town Council, Paul Havity in the room. Prior to your next meeting, we'll get the final language approved by Town Council, the Town Council will review the entire warrant, and then you'll have the final version of the warrant for you to sign at your meeting on September 9th. And then, from there, you'll have two meetings until the Fall Annual Town Meeting, so the following two meetings, you'll, we'll have presentations, and the board will make its recommendations on the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting. The only substantive difference from what we have this evening from three weeks ago is, one, is there were no citizen petition warrant articles submitted, so that's not one of them. But what I did do is, is I reordered the articles to put what I believe would be the Consent Agenda articles to the front of the warrant. So right after Article 1, which is reports of town offices and committees, the next articles, basically 2 through 5, I believe, would be Consent Agenda. And what that means is, basically, they're de minimis articles that we would anticipate Town Meeting would approve in bulk, because basically, as you can see listed, one's rescinding, authorized but unissued borrowing, the other one's rescinding an unexpendited appropriation, one, the other one, next one, is the Cemetery Improvement Development Fund for the ongoing work at the cemetery expansion. And then the fifth one is one you first saw a year ago, it's appropriating the money from the Uber and Lyft, the 10 cents per town, which it comes out to like $8,000 to a transportation project, because we have to report that to the Commonwealth by the end of December. So that's the change. After that, it pretty much just picks up how we would traditionally do a Fall Annual Town Meeting. We get into the budgetary matters, community preservation matters, and then the zoning articles. And then prior to that, we have the Home Rule Petition regarding the change in the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So again, there's no substantive change. What I did do is, I, you know, it was change the, a bit of the order. So again, if there's any changes you want in terms of order, or, as you know, Town Meeting can take articles out of order, but I recall being, the last couple of town meetings where the moderator is on the Consent Agenda, you have everybody flipping pages, going to Article 4, and then Article 17, and I said, "Maybe it just makes sense," particularly at Fall Town Meeting, "Let's just bundle them, both in terms of consent, as well as locations, that way it's a little easier."
Thank you.
And then also, you kind of get, feel like you got some momentum, because after about 10 minutes into the meeting, you're already up to Article 6, you know?
Yes. Thank you.
So, anyway, if the board has any questions or changes, but if not, I will bring you the final version of the warrant as reviewed for legal form by Town Council at your next meeting in three weeks for signature and posting.
I have a couple of questions. So Articles 7, 8, 14, and 15 have to do with the operating budget and free cash and fiscal items. Is it not until the September meeting where we get visibility into what's being proposed there?
Yeah, because what will happen is, is the Board of Selectmen will sign the warrant on September 9th. The Finance Committee will probably meet starting on the 12th, then your next meeting, and then the Finance Committee's next meeting, so basically, the Finance Committee and Selectmen meetings in September and early October are to review the warrant and make recommendations for Town Meeting.
Okay.
None of these are very complex. I mean, we're not building an elementary school and so forth, but, yeah, you will, and some of them I don't have financial numbers for, in terms of, you know, final numbers to provide, but they are placeholders. Also, the other thing that's uncertain is, the Town Accountant has not submitted the balance sheet for the town, so we also don't have the number of what the free cash balance would be, as approved by the Department of Revenue. So some of these articles may not move at all if there is insufficient cash. So that's why we don't sort of jump into them now, because, one, we don't know how much money is available, and part of it, that calculation is, is, like you said, what does the town wish to do with the cash that's available? Do you wish to make investments into some of these needs, or do you wish to use it to either put into savings, i.e. stabilization, or...
Good, I just wanted to know the timing of that. My next question is with Number 20, the Home Rule Petition for Selectmen to Select Board. Does the Town Meeting only have to vote on the charter? Because we have the Board of Selectmen policy document that would also need the language changed. Is that something that we just change ourselves, or does Town Meeting need to vote on that?
No, that would be something you would change afterwards.
Okay.
Because what will happen is, if this is approved by Town Meeting in October, we'll submit it to the State Legislature for a Home Rule Petition. Yeah, we'll ask the Legislature to move on it quickly, but quickly in...
So once it's granted, then we would change the policy document?
Right, and also, not only the policy, you'd also go back and change the bylaws of the town. I mean, we've only adjusted the charter.
Right, I'm just asking what has to be voted on. It's only the charter has to be voted on.
And then, once the charter change is approved and is in legal form and in effect, we would then come back at the next Town Meeting to change the bylaws of the town that reference Select Board and so forth. Simultaneous that, you can do your own policies and so forth, but until the Legislature enacts the law that changes the charter, we really don't want to get ahead of them.
Okay. And then on Number 21, the zoning bylaw amendment for Route 40, I think you'd probably want to go check that, because the Planning Board's position all along, and what they reviewed last week, has been that that is actually two separate amendments.
Yeah, this is just placeholder.
But I was reading it in here, and on Number 21, it clumps extending IA to the street together with the overlay, and I think it's the Planning Board's intent to have that as two separate votes and two separate articles.
What will appear on the warrant is what is voted and requested by the Planning Board. What I'm trying to do is just provide placeholders, and sort of, you know, foreshadowing what may be coming. But, and that's why I don't put any language in. And what we try to do on those is try to put...
There is language, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Right, but it's just, it's just placeholder language, because what I try to do is, we've seen this from previous Town Meetings, we try to get in the warrant, which then goes into the warrant book, which goes to Town Meeting, as close to possibly you can to find an article. What Town Meeting doesn't like to do is start flipping between documents, well, what's changed, and what's in the warrant, in the warrant book, versus a motion on the floor. So that's why I don't even go there. So I'm just trying to provide placeholders. And where I got the language for the placeholders was from the legal advertisement that was advertised in the paper for the Planning Board meeting. So that's where the language came from. But again, that legal advertisement is just a notice, it's not a, you know, legal...
It's not binding.
Exactly. It's just to let people know what the Planning Board is considering. So, anyway, you will get final language and final format there, your next meeting.
The charter change requires two-thirds vote, or a majority?
Yeah, it requires two-thirds vote at Town Meeting, and then majority vote at the Legislature, because this would be a special act of the Legislature. It would not come, it would not come back to the ballot, you know, in a, you know, the Legislature likely is not going to require that. And the reason for that is, this is, we're not the only community that's doing this. There are others before us, there, Westford is coming a little bit behind us, I think they're going next spring, and there's other communities, there's, I think Province Town is before the Legislature right now, waiting action any day for finalization of legislative approval.
Frightened at it a couple of years ago.
Exactly.
This is not uncommon.
They're not going to send it back for a ballot vote.
Yeah, we're not, we're not...
Which, if it were, that would be a majority vote at the ballot. But no, this will, this will be two-thirds vote at Town Meeting, and basically legislative approval. It just, you know, the good news is, it'll get done by next July, because the session ends next July. So, so they will, you know, and again, we're asking to get it done sooner, and I think perhaps because of the repetitive nature of these, that maybe we can get committee action on it quick, because there's really no reason for it to get hung up. Once we can get counsel for the House and the Senate to bless it, then it should just move. So we'll do it weekend.
All right.
Okay. So that's the item on the charter. And the only other thing I have on my report this evening is a report on local aid. Since your last meeting, we did receive the, the governor enacted the budget, and the budget's now in effect for the state, and the state issued the final, what's called cherry sheet, which are your local aid estimates and assessments. And the good news is, it doesn't vary significantly from what we had at the Spring Annual Town Meeting, when we enacted the budget back at end of April, beginning of May. But what I thought was helpful, and I think is timely, is I sort of gave a little bit of a perspective of particularly the issue of education aid. As the board knows, and you probably read, and the community may have read in local press, the Legislature, you know, provided an extraordinary increase in Chapter 70 Education Aid in the state budget. Unfortunately, none of it came to the, most of the communities in the Commonwealth, it was pretty much directed towards gateway cities, and those cities that basically have a large amount of English-language learners, and so forth. However, the Legislature does indicate that as, perhaps as, as early as this fall, which is expected, but it's certainly by the end of this legislative session, which will be next June, they intend to enact a new Chapter 70 Education Funding Formula. That's significant, because the last time it was really radically revoted was 1993. There were some modifications along the way, so this is obviously rather extraordinary and significant. Towards that end, what I did is, I looked at, what did we receive this past year? Obviously, we got the $30 additional student, or what amount, to 1.38% increase, or $150,000. And then looked back over five and 10 years, because, I mean, I could obviously go back further, but I think the important thing in this data, and I'm not going to go through the weeds of it, but the key is, is that we received $9.24 million in Chapters 70 Education Aid 10 years ago. The budget that was just approved provides $11.2 million in Chapter 70 aid. Basically, over a 10-year period, the increase was roughly just over 20%, so roughly 20% or 2% per year, non-compounded. And even if you do the compounding, it's, you know, it's clearly we're getting, you know, less than inflationary amount, or a modest amount of Chapter 70 aid. To put that into perspective, the appropriation at Town Meeting for education aid 10 years ago was $42 million. This budget that starts in the year we're in now, with school starting next week, the appropriation for the Town Meeting was $61 million. So what's happened is, is you've had a 45% growth in the budget appropriated by Town Meeting over the last 10 years, but only a 21% increase in Chapter 70 Education Funding. And so I hope that just gives you a perspective in terms of what we feel has been, the shrinking amount of state support for the cost of education in Town or Chelmsford, and obviously, similar communities. And I think that's just, with the Legislature now expecting to take this up in a matter of perhaps several weeks, it may be something that the community, and/or the board, or others, want to convey, because, you know, this is going to impact us for foreseeable time. We, we are, you know, it's, because the burden, obviously, if the state's not picking it up, you've got two choices. You pick it up through your property tax of the local budget, which either means you're not devoting local resources to other needs, such as public safety and so forth, or you're not providing the level of services that perhaps you may feel is warranted. So, so I think that's all I really wanted to add on that, was, one, was just to give you a little bit of data, but also just make the board and the community aware that it's anticipated that in the next several weeks, that the Legislature is going to take a considerably important vote on what's going to affect education funding in Chelmsford, as well as communities across the Commonwealth, and, you know, it's something that people may want to reach out to the delegation on, because it's, this is important.
It's worth it, and I need to emphasize that reaching out to your, to your representatives and your...
and your Senator makes a difference. The phone calls add up. They do sit there with spreadsheets and marking, you know, for or against on various topics, calling the Governor's Office, just putting in your two cents and saying, "I am for fully funding schools, we need to bring that up to par and stop withholding money." Like, those are, those are things you can call, and you can make that statement, and they will put that down on their spreadsheet, and at some point, the political calculus will come up in our favor in theory. But it's, it's important to make your voices heard at that level, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of appointments for the Board's consideration this evening. The first one is for the, and I guess you can do them in bulk or whatever you choose, but I'm seeking to do the reappointment of the Parade Committee. Because the Parade is on the Fourth of July, we don't run that with the fiscal year, we've sort of run it expiring at the end of July, so, you know, we'd ask, you know, the Committee will get started again once we get back after Labor Day. I'm also seeking the Board's confirmation of appointment of Diane Boyver to, for an unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2021, on the Council on Aging. That name may be familiar because not too long ago, you appointed her as an alternate member, associate member. And then we also then have Jan Bunce as an associate member for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2022. Again, these have all been reviewed by the Council on Aging, so I would ask your confirmation of these appointments this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Town Manager's appointments as presented.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Paul. So we have a policy, draft policy for lowering the flags at half-staff. Discussion on that?
Well, I haven't heard any comments from anybody since we brought it at our last meeting, so I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on it.
Well, what was this note in the packet from...
That's for the other one.
The next policy.
Oh, that's for the next one, I'm sorry. Okay.
This is just the half-staff option.
Yeah, for the lowering of the flag.
Yeah, I'm with you.
On this one, I did receive a comment that, according to this person, legally, you're only, like, you're not supposed to fly for selectmen, but I...
I know.
That doesn't make sense to me, so...
Federal guideline, right? Is it the federal rules or the...
I think that's, yeah.
State that you only fly for...
Well, yeah, it's, it's...
Maybe part of the discretion.
Yeah, I mean...
But I feel like when it's a member of the community, I'd...
Yeah, I mean, I think officially it's supposed to be at the direction of the Governor and/or President.
Exactly.
So do we have to send a postcard to the Governor and be like, "Hey, we want to fly our flags," and I mean, like, what's he going to say, no?
I'll text him.
Text him, there you go.
By the time we get approval, it'd be too late.
I mean, honestly.
So, anyway.
So with that, do we need to...
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the policy for lowering the flag to half-staff as presented.
A second?
Motion a second, Paul, there's no legal issue with this, right?
No.
Nothing, okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, on the other one, I reached out to Paul Haverty last week, and he has not had a chance to do a complete review of the consequences or legality of the other types of flags, so he asked that we postpone discussion on that till our next meeting.
Yeah, I was, I had an extensive conversation with him, and he is investigating, and one of the cases he is looking into is a subject of ongoing federal litigation. I'm literally reading from his email. There's a subject fund going, a federal litigation in the city of Boston. So there are cases, just trying to figure out what the actual policy can be. What he did tell me is that flags that have been flown in the past, there should be no reason why they cannot be flown again. So that's, that's the only definitive word he was willing to give me without further investigation, so.
And that's what he's trying to do.
Yep, he's looking.
All right, so with that, we go on to meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2019 as presented.
Second?
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the Public Input Session. Vivian, we had another copy of these on our table, so you know what...
Yep, there's a sentence that I added to the end of paragraph 5, and then I added a list of documents at the end of it. I'm not sure if you want to go with that list because I just went off what Virginia sent me, and we didn't have any, like, real documents that I was using, so I just based it on that, and I don't know how you want to handle that, because we usually don't include emails in your list of supporting documents when I do this. So, if you want to use that, great, if you want to change it, I don't care, it's up to you.
What I had sent to Vivian was, there were two, maybe three emails from Mike where he had scanned in all the emails that Ken read. So they're, they're there by virtue of Ken reading them. And then I sent her the scan of the petition for Cottage Row that Mike sent out, and I sent the signature list that Mike sent out.
I don't think it hurts to have the documents attached.
Yeah.
It's safer to have them.
Yeah.
And what was, and what was the sentence? I don't see the sentence.
It's the, she put in there the, on...
The paragraph that starts with email, no name provided, I guess that was the petition, but...
So it's the last sentence in that paragraph? This document was presented.
Ken referred to it as an email, so I kept it as an email, but it's not an email, so I don't, whatever.
Gotcha.
I just threw that sentence in there to clarify that it's actually a petition, not an email.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the Public Input Session meetings' minutes for June 12, 2019 as amended, the most current version we have here.
Staying on that one.
Right, you were not at that meeting.
Second.
So a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we also have, make a motion that we approve but not release executive session meeting minutes for July 29, 2013.
A second?
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. And with that, that brings us to liaison reports and referrals. We'll start. Who's ready?
Sure. So, last week, Paul and Evan Bolansky and Don Van Dyne and I attended a Middlesex III function. It's an annual function they have with the Northeast Realtors to talk about development and things along the Route 3 corridor. And I just wanted to acknowledge that Lisa Maroney sat on the panel for that, and she really did a terrific job representing Chelmsford and what we have to offer. The Conservation Commission would like the public to know that at their meeting tomorrow evening, they'll be discussing an evaluation report regarding the dam at the Cranberry Bog and whether it can be maintained or not. As Paul mentioned, there's several zoning articles from the Planning Board on the draft warrant. They are having a public hearing on all of those warrant articles on August 28th, which includes the Route 40, Groton Road area, amendments to the CEI, CEIOD overlay to allow multifamily housing in industrial areas, pre-existing non-conforming lots, cluster open space updates, historical preservation and reuse, and elimination of the Sign Advisory Committee. And the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee wants to thank and acknowledge the great turnout they had at a meeting they had at the Varney Park last week with the public, with the DPW, and with the Chelmsford Police Department to try to start to form a Park and Playground Subcommittee. And they talked a lot about both planned and other candidate improvements for the park. The Chelmsford Center for the Arts is holding an ice cream social benefit with Trailside Ice Cream on August 31st, if that's of interest, and there are many new events on their calendars now between September and December. And if you'd like to take a look at that, you can look at chelmsfordarts.org. Thank you.
George?
Just one, I was asked to make an announcement on Wednesday night, August 21st, this Wednesday, at 7:30 PM at the Chelmsford High School Plateau Field. CPAL, which is the Chelmsford Police Athletic League organization, is putting on their annual movie, The Incredibles, Number Two, because that was sold by...
It's Number Two.
You people, you were fans of The Incredibles. And, and it says, free is popcorn, ice cream, cotton candy, hot dogs, drinks, face painting, glow sticks, and much more. So just, just bring a blanket and a chair and enjoy your night on CPAL. It's Wednesday night, again, it's Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 7:30 PM at the High School Plateau Field, the original football field up there, so. They usually put on a good show, and they do a lot for the kids in town, so hopefully it'll be a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, George, Emily?
Listen, if you need more information, you can call, you can contact Gary Hannigan at C-Hannigan, H-A-N-N-A-G-A-N, at townofchelmsford.us.
That would be G as in Gary Hannigan.
G Hannigan.
It's a funky font, sorry.
All right. Thank you, George, Emily?
I went to the Permanent Building Committee meeting a couple of weeks back and saw the new DPW building, which is moving towards completion. It has some extremely impressive truck lifts that actually, all of the trucks, all of our DPW trucks are programmed into them so that when they pull up for, for maintenance, the lifts actually know which truck is on there, and then they expand and contract to appropriately lift the right truck. It was super impressive. It's, it's a lovely building, they're, it's well laid out, it's well thought out, everything is, is set up in a very organized fashion to maximize efficiency and to make sure that everyone is coordinating well together, so that was, that was impressive. I, the first meeting of the Stormwater, Stormwater Committee also met, and we, that, we have a firm, I'm trying to remember the name, do you remember? I'm drawing a blank on the firm.
Weston Sampson?
Weston Sampson, all right. So we have contracted with Weston Sampson to go over our waterways and see which ones need improving or clearing. We have many, many miles of waterways in Chelmsford, culverts, and drainage areas, and so they are actually walking through these miles on foot, noting where trees are down, noting where trash has been dumped, noting what needs to be cleaned, and just trying to get to a point where a stormwater can be collected and reused, where it's not seen as waste but seen as a resource, where we are making sure that our streams are flowing efficiently to reduce flooding. And so that was also really interesting. Also, this weekend, there is the Middlesex County 4H Fair on the edge of Chelmsford and Westford. That is Friday, August 23rd through Sunday, August 25th. It is at the 4H Westford Fairgrounds. And I don't have an address for that. It's on the Chelmsford Westford Town Line.
South Chelmsford Street.
South Chelmsford Road, so that sounds like lots of fun.
Off Garrison, right?
Yes, sort of.
Parkerville.
There you go. So this sounds like lots of fun, great events for the family, so.
All right, Pat?
Okay, we have three young men who have recently achieved their Eagle Scout status, Ben Green, Henry O'Donnell, and Ryan Kruger, so congratulations to those, those young men. An impressive accomplishment for each of them. Also, this coming Saturday, August 24th, will be the last book drop for the Chelmsford Friends of the Library Annual Book Sale, so your last chance if you have a bunch of books at home and you want to donate them to be resold at the book sale will be September 20th to 22nd. So package up all your books and bring them to the carriage house behind the library on this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00.
Great. And one note on that, too, the young man, Kruger, his whole family, all his brothers have received Eagle Scout, so that's quite an accomplishment.
That's true, but I commented about that the last time I went, how it seems to be a family affair.
Yeah.
Fathers and sons and uncles and brothers and...
Yep. Great, all right. I don't have any reports, you guys stole all the glory there.
No.
So with that, any press questions? Nothing? Okay. A motion?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. [end of transcript]